Good evening. Barbara, can you hear us?
Yeah, thank you, Barry. You're muted if you can't hear us, or maybe you can't hear us.
Can you hit? Okay. Jim, I got it.
Recording in progress.
There we are. Can everyone on the phone hear us or on Zoom? That's gonna get annoying.
This is Barbara. I can hear you.
Okay, thank you.
Somebody needs to be on mute.
Jim needs to mute.
You need to mute.
On Zoom. Okay. Town of Newton. Whichever computer that is.
Annie and Coleman were trying to get on before.
I'm in the meeting, Coleman McDonough. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. We're just trying to fix our audio on our side.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have an echo. That computer says it's muted, too. Okay, awesome. Thank you. Sorry about the delay. So the Newton Plating Board would like to call a public meeting on December 13, 2022, at 5 past 7:00. I would like to start with the...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we have a quorum in person. We also have...
My phone number. Oh, hello?
Hi, Annie. We also have...
Hello?
Ms. White and Ms. Collier remote via Zoom tonight.
Thank you.
So the first item on the agenda tonight is a continuation of 125 Development Corp. of Plastow, New Hampshire's request for a public hearing for a four-building condominium site plan off South Main Street in Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 14, Block 1, Lot 27-3. So just to give a general recap, this application has been in front of the board for plus or minus 100 days, give or take, over this traditional or allotted 65-day... Or the amount of time that we have to review it. The applicant has asked for an extension. We've granted an extension or a continuation, and they have provided some additional information to us for our review. One of the requests was to update the drawings to reflect the existing conditions. My understanding is the applicant went out, completed the existing condition survey, and I'm probably missing a few other things, but... For 27-3, Ms. Rowden, do you have anything to add to that before we...
I have provided an updated review. I can go over that, but I think it actually might be useful to go through what the applicant's engineer has put together, which is actually an accurate sort of summary of where things stand with this board, with a couple of components, with the zoning board process that are all relevant. So I would actually suggest he go through his.
Okay. And this came in today, so we have not had an opportunity to really take a look at it. I was able to breeze through it earlier, but I know most of the board probably has not seen this. Sorry.
I do want to say, well, it's a good summary. It is not any new information that was provided today. It's just sort of a good overview.
And Ms. White, you had a comment?
Yes, I did. Some of the information that had come in later today, I just wanted to remind the board that we don't usually look at things that have come in at the last minute where nobody's had a chance to look at it. I'm not talking about the overview from Johnson Beach.
Okay, yes. I think that's definitely more relevant to some later things on the agenda. Or some things that will come up on the agenda, but thank you for that as well. I do agree. And Barry?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Again, my name is Barry Guyer. I'm the Johnson Beach engineer here for the applicant. Since our last meeting, we have updated the existing conditions as requested by the board. We also reviewed and revised the grade of drainage as required. The major revisions requested by the town review engineer, they included the...
Set it on there. That's all right. There we go. So the requested revisions by the town review engineer included the guardrail revisions and additional detail on the Route 108 roadway improvements required by the traffic analysis. We have updated and attended a preliminary ZBA hearing on the variances required for the proposed development. All the variances requested are either for the roadway construction or drainage features, catch basins, pipes of that nature. Unfortunately, the ZBA did not have sufficient time last meeting to hear the project, so we have been continued to the first week in January. The revisions to reduce the impact and number of variances required was received well. That doesn't really mean anything, but it was received well by the board. DOT is still reviewing the driveway application. DOT's stance on the project is that the driveway permit for the site is currently active, or there is a currently active driveway permit for this project. So what we're doing is trying to amend that existing driveway permit. We have received verbal confirmation that the DOT is going to work with us to amend that driveway permit. It is currently, has been approved by the Traffic Division and is now, I believe, in front of the Highway Division. That's part of the summary that I provided you. Now that we have the confidence that the ZBA is moving forward, the AOT application is being submitted, and the town of Plastow application will be submitted by the 28th of this month for hopefully a hearing on January 18th. We did request three waivers originally. First one was to the road length, which was granted on, back in June. The second was for detailed septic plans, which we will withdraw because our revised plans do include detailed septic plans. And the third one's to a hydrogeological study. We are requesting to eliminate the requirement for the hydrogeological study for this phase. We can go through that in detail, but the hydrogeological study is required for any property that has a septic load over 2,500 gallons per day. This project is 2,760 gallons per day for Phase 2. So if you look at it, it's any property that has a septic load of 2,500 gallons. That could be 2 acres, or in our case, 143 acres. So the intent of that is to make sure that the site is capable of handling the proposed septic load. In our case, that's less than five houses. So if you don't believe that we can put 100, or five houses on 143 acres and it'll handle the septic load, that's kind of beyond the pale. So we think that waiver would be appropriate. We do understand that future projects, the hydrogeological study would be required, and we wouldn't be opposed to making that a condition of any approval. But for this phase, we would ask that it be waived. And lastly, we have received updated comment letter from Ms. Rowden. Went through them. Don't really have any issue with any of her comments. So with that, I'll take questions from the board, or answer, or anything else the board might want us to discuss.
Does anybody on the board have any... Sorry.
Do you want me to go through my letter at this point?
Sure, please.
So I will start off that I do think that Mike Vicnelli needs to provide a review of his latest plan set. He has not had a chance to do that yet. There are a couple of things. There are some notes related to Plastow's need for approval that need to be removed, the variances that they're currently seeking. I would still recommend that you require a hydrogeologic study, even though I do agree that the site capacity is large for the gallons per day that they are seeking. I think for a variety of reasons, a hydrogeologic study would be good for the site. The architectural plans, it does seem like they still need a variance for the building height of Building 3. It's a little bit above your 35-foot building height limit. One additional change that was some, a significant change, is the turnaround that is for the access road that sort of goes off to the back of the site. That was originally a cul-de-sac. It's now been changed to an L-shaped turnaround. It seems that having that on the gas line easement is unnecessary and may not be necessarily liked by the utility. Why add additional truck traffic capacity on top of the easement when the turnaround could be either before or after that easement property? So I do suggest you get some approval from the gas utility as to that design. They would still be able to cross over the easement. Some additional notes related to stormwater and your reporting requirements. It's just putting what are in your regulations onto the plan set. The condominium conversion would have to come at a later step if and when this gets approved. It also seems that the existing conditions that were requested generally conform to what is out there. I have not walked this site, but based on the aerials that I can at least have public access to, it does seem to generally conform with what is happening out there.
Thank you. Annie, I think you had a comment or question?
No, my question was just I wanted to hear Jen's comment, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have an updated drainage report?
We submitted it with the last package, I believe. I can confirm that, but I don't have it with me.
It was not submitted to me, at least with what was submitted two weeks ago.
I will look into that. It may not have changed. I can't guarantee you, but we'll review it and get back to you on that.
So the previous drainage report said the site was treed in the narrative, and the existing conditions shows it's not treed?
I will review that and get back to you.
That that was, and there's... I have a couple more comments. I think it would be really helpful, and this is for all applications going forward. I've noticed that revision dates haven't been included and, you know, for less complex projects with less revisions, it's pretty easy for us to keep track of. This plan set's dated August of this year. Throughout, maybe I'm...
No, there's a 12-6-22 on the bottom left. See it?
No. Oh, I'm just looking at the words says revisions.
Oh, okay.
So as well as, I still think, and I'll wait for Mike Vicnelli's comments. I just quickly reviewed this, like infiltration basin number four, and I discussed this last time. It's still floating in the air. It's not tied into anything, so when this goes to DES at the Alteration Train Bureau, they're probably going to have comments. So if things start changing, you're probably going to have to come back here.
Understood. Yeah, well, I'll review that. We did look at them. Maybe you missed that one, but I will obviously review it, and we, I understand that it should have had the, the rev date should have been updated.
So same thing with 3. I would, again, take a look at most of your basins, and I didn't look at this in any detail. The riprap aprons are in areas that aren't proposed to be cleared, so the limit of work would be increasing and just minor things like that. But I started diving into it, and I think there'll be some comments of DES that will come back, that will change the plan set, change the drainage report, that may make some basins smaller, bigger, change the location, which would then potentially come back to us. Does anybody else have any comments?
I do. This is Barbara.
Yes, Ms. White.
Okay. I would like to see something in writing from the fire department to make sure that the changed L turnaround on the roadway is fine for them to turn their equipment around, and I would also like to see it in writing that the fire department has no issues with the height of the building being a foot and a half higher than the town limit of 35 feet. They have 36.5. So I would like to see it in writing from the fire department to put into the file.
We're going to revise the height of the building to meet the 35 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
No comment? Okay.
Dennis, I am interested in keeping the study, hydraulic study.
Okay.
Is there a specific reason why you went from the cul-de-sac to that L design on that street?
Yeah, we actually were trying to limit the amount of wetland buffer impact. So that's why we went from the turnaround, or the circular turnaround to the actual...
Well, because I can understand the L. I mean, looking at the dimensions, it's definitely big enough if a tractor trailer had to go up there and it could back into that L section and turn around. So I know Mrs. White's concerned and the rest of them. Some people would want the fire department, and I would like their approval, too, but from what I've seen on the, the dimensions of that L, there's more than enough room to turn a tractor trailer around, so the fire equipment apparatus would have plenty of room to be able to maneuver through there.
Yeah, I agree, and it's a temporary turnaround. Ultimately, this road's going to loop to Puzzle Lane.
All the way around.
If you're done with questions, you want me to offer some procedural?
I'd like to, I'd like to just say that I think that Jen's, this is Annie, that I think that Jen's comment that the gas company saying and writing how they feel about the L shape on their easement would be an important consideration to have.
Have you reached out to, is it Unitil that owns that?
I haven't, but in lieu of the turnaround being on their property, we'll probably just shift it further north or west off of the gas easement. We still, they have the right to access across it, but I think, I think Ms. Rowden's comment was the turnaround on it versus the access.
Yeah, it just seems unnecessary, pavements over the easement.
I think we can locate it to, off of the easement and still have the same impact.
And those gravel wetlands are proposed to be permanent?
The gravel wetland?
At the end of the road?
Yes, they are.
Okay, for whenever the road is extended?
Correct.
How, so if we were to approve the waiver on the hydrogeological study, who would enforce, who would enforce that that study to be conducted in the future if there were changes?
I mean, you could have the study be required as a condition of approval and have to be conducted within one year. You could do that. Then it's more of an act of paperwork. You can also have the town review it and make sure, or the town engineer review it, sort of to close that loop.
Yeah.
It's an after-the-fact condition like that is unusual for, I think, exactly the reasons that you're questioning it.
Right. Which is why I feel like that's why we're inclined to just, to do the study.
My thought was that, excuse me for interrupting, but that you could ensure that in Phase 3, you could put a condition on the approval that it can't be waived in Phase 3. Because for 2,760 gallons over 2,500 gallons, which is the requirement to have it, for 143 acres, it's a little iffy, but additional, additional buildings, additional use makes more sense.
Yeah, my issue with your analogy, though, is because you compared it to house, like to residential use. The thing is, you're not going to be adding, once those five houses are divided out and built out, it's very rare that you're probably going to be adding more houses to that in the next 10 or 15 years versus with a commercial site. It's likely to get developed quickly.
Oh, I agree. That's why, that's why we wouldn't be opposed to the condition that additional buildings or additional use would, could not, you couldn't waive that condition.
I think I'm more supportive of just knowing that information now, so that we've got it for the future rather than waiting to do it, in my opinion. So.
I agree with, I agree with what Mr. LaVoy is saying. This is Annie, that it would be better to just have this all complete instead of having things kind of hanging out there. It seems like a pattern, and I'd just rather have a complete series of things so that we can just not have a whole bunch of conditions that such-and-such be completed, but let's complete it.
Yeah.
I mean, it isn't like it would hold up, excuse me, it isn't like it would hold up the applicant from being able to start anything because he would still have to have it done and it would come back and be reviewed. So I don't see an inconvenience to the applicant for that, and I see a convenience for the town in making sure that everything is done in order. I'm done.
This is Coleman McDonough. May I speak?
Yes, sorry. Sure.
Coleman McDonough, owner, applicant. I think all the board members are new, and I just wanted to add that we have already done a hydro study, and we can provide the documentation for the hydro study that we've done in the past.
May I ask when that was done?
I don't recall the year, but I can forward that to Jim. A copy of that to the board.
It was a study done in '07 for Phase, or for the project at the end of Puzzle Lane.
There is also a well in Phase 2, and yeah, over behind the Quintana building, and the wells still exist.
Do you have any comment on that?
I mean, it's useful that there's something on an adjacent site that may be able to play into if you were to require something on this site. Same thing if he, Mr. McDonough were to be able to get to the next phase of his project, and they can all talk to each other, but this is the application that is before you. This is the site that is before you.
I have a question because this has come up specifically with this project. There's seven-foot approximately high retaining walls on the edge of the road with guardrails shown. Are you guys going to be able to get guardrails?
Well, I guess, calling that the construction.
So it looks like sometime early summer, we're going to have stock available to us. That's what we're being told, so we have ordered ahead, and for also the other stuff that we have to do.
Okay.
127-4, so, June, I sort of believe it is.
Because my concerns are if this gets approved with the retaining wall, and I'm guessing you're using retaining walls because you're adjacent to wetlands and you don't want to impact them.
Yeah, and if you look at the profile, the existing ground drops off more dramatically or quicker than is allowed per your current road regs. So we're building the road to town standards, so we have to extend that grade a little further. And, and we don't want to impact the wetlands adjacent to us.
Right. I'm guessing if you're not going to put guardrails up, what I don't want to happen is this cross-section get approved, and then something different is constructed because something's not available, or it was easier or not. I would, or for whatever reason, I would prefer to have what is going to be constructed be approved now, even if it's, you know, for whatever reason. I'm just potentially seeing that, you know, there could be a lack of material and then the guardrails are not installed, or something to that fashion.
So in that situation, I have seen it where an applicant has proposed an alternate design. So if they're unable to do the guardrails, they can propose an alternate design. It's part of your review packet. If for some reason that original design isn't available because of materials or whatever reason. That way, they effectively have two approved designs they can utilize. So that is a way. I don't know of the supply chain issues with the guardrails, how unlikely it is that you may not get them, but just as an alternate.
So yeah, I think what we'll do is I'll talk to Mr. Vicnelli and see what his thoughts are on that. Obviously, we tried to use the guardrail, we think will be the safest, and if there's an alternative to that, he'll accept as the town engineer, then we will show that as well, just in case.
Yeah, I was just thinking, obviously, I wasn't looking at the cross-sections with the limits of the wetlands, but wetland buffers, but additional fill would potentially remove the need for that guardrail. But I'll like, I'll let Mr. Vicnelli speak to that. So Jen, you were going to give us procedural?
Yeah, so you could take up the waiver request with the hydrogeologic study. You've had it for, since I think the original application, although the reasoning has changed a little bit. You could take that up if you wanted to. You could also wait for the town engineer's review as well before taking that up. It may be useful for the applicant to know with the waiver one way or the other. But at this point, you know, there's not a whole other, lot of additional information that I can help you with as far as what you may need, what you don't need. The rest is really engineering review. So I would recommend you wait for any decision on the overall application until you see that comment letter from Mike Vicnelli.
And he's had this for approximately a week?
10 days or so.
10 days, thank you.
When's our next meeting?
The 27th.
27th, okay.
What are you saying, Jen, 10 days for the engineer to be able to go out, look at it and get a...
He's had it for 10 days.
Yeah, he got the application the same time I did, which was about 10 days ago.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a large plan set. It did change fairly significantly.
So he's supposed to be giving us his comments already? He's working on it?
I have not spoken with Mike Vicnelli. I understand it. He did receive it. He typically would provide comments on these applications.
So should we just make a motion to wait for his comments?
I, that would be my recommendation.
Okay, so can I make a motion, or do we need to push it to public comment first?
If it's just for the waiver, you can make, you should open up the waiver request to the public, and then you can do a motion and vote if you're ready for it.
Okay. Should we do, can we do that?
Sure.
Do I do that?
I can't.
Oh, I can do that?
You can do that.
All right, can we open it up for public comment on the waiver?
Or you want to make a motion? Okay.
I'll make a motion to open it up for public comment on the waiver.
You're down, bud.
Great.
So this is specific to the waiver request for the need for the applicant to provide a hydrogeologic study for the septic subsurface disposal systems?
Correct. Your regulations require anything with a septic capacity of over 2,500 gallons per day requires a hydrogeologic study. This is over twice that.
I'll second that motion. This is Annie.
Thank you, Annie. So does anybody from the public? I'll do in-house first.
We need to vote on it, right?
We actually didn't need a motion.
We didn't need to vote. Yeah.
I thought it was a motion for the...
That's why I was passing it to you.
Sorry, thank you. Does anybody in the audience have any comments for that waiver request? Doesn't look like it. And how about anybody on Zoom? Doesn't look like it. How about anybody on Zoom? And Doug has his hand up. So the floor is yours if you want to speak unless that was accidental. And sorry, I do need an address from you when you speak.
Mr.?
We can't hear him.
We cannot hear you, though. However, we can see you.
He's not muted, so I don't know why he's not talking.
His speaker might not be working with his headphones.
Yeah, it might be his microphone headphone combination.
Could you unplug your headphones from the computer and see if that works?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
There you go.
My name is Doug Castenotus. I live at 21 Evergreen Drive. My only concern is we have Hampstead Water supplying the water for the entire 115 units in Sergeant Woods. And it abuts, I believe, the larger lot of where the housing project is going in. And I would like this considered when the septic system or water system is going for these home designs. And that's all I have to say.
So I think I heard him, which was that he's worried about the impact of any water usage on Sergeant Woods, which is dependent on Hampstead's water supply. Is that right?
Yes, and our water supply is right abutting one of the lots.
Right, okay.
So he's worried about the impact of the septic system on their drinking water?
Right.
The wellhead protection area for Sergeant Woods well, so where the lot is drawing from, does fall onto this property. I don't believe it reaches quite as far as where the actual development is at this, that's proposed at this time. But it does fall onto this lot.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, Jen. Does anybody else online, thank you Doug, by the way. It was, and I apologize, your last name, Caston, Castiston?
Castenotus.
Thank you. I did not do a great job on that one. Does anybody else online have any comments?
Okay, so can I make a motion?
You can make a motion. Thank you, Mark.
To wait for Mr. Vicnelli's comments on Lot 27-3.
This is the waiver for the hydrogeologic study. Do you want to give them a waiver from the hydrogeologic study or not?
Annie's going to do it for me.
This is Annie. I'd like to make a motion to deny the waiver for the geologic study.
Thank you, Annie. So Annie has a motion to deny the waiver for the hydrogeological study.
Second for discussion.
So you do need to state the reason for the motion. What's your justification for?
Okay, one is that I feel that it should be complete. I think that it's important to, it's going to have to be done at some point. The applicant stated that it should be done in the next four to six weeks and that would take it into January. And if we granted the motion and moved this project forward at this point, then it still would have sufficient conditions that would need to be met. And I would like this to be one of those conditions so that we have everything complete and have protected all the abutting properties and the aquifer with our knowledge of what's going on.
Is that a?
That's a reason for the denial of the waiver.
Yeah, thank you, Annie. I was looking at Jen, if that is?
It doesn't have to be part of the motion, but it should be captured as part of the minutes for the discussion.
That was my question. Have we found sufficient facts to deny the waiver?
If you believe they are sufficient for the reason for your making your decision one way or the other, then yes.
Is there any other discussion?
Can I speak, Coleman McDonough?
Yes.
Yeah, Jim Doggett just made a comment. I didn't hear it.
No, he didn't.
I think he was clarifying that we need to make a statement for why the waiver was denied.
Just one more, one more comment that, I mean, again, we have already done a hydro study. I don't know whose mic that is. But we've already done a hydro study. And also, I don't know, Barry can tell you, he's got the plans right there. That all the wells that are drilled also have a test reporting for all the water quality into, I believe it's Bob Leveroni in the state. So we're like triple dipping, but just wanted to add that, you know, all the wells are reported to the Board of Health and again to the state.
Can I make a comment? I mean, we haven't, we don't have the study in front of us that was done. And so we can't really make a decision based off of something that we're being told exists, but we haven't seen it.
And my understanding, it's not for this parcel.
Not for this parcel either.
I can provide that to the board if they'd like.
That would be helpful for the board and their engineer or the town engineer to review. If it's, yes, please provide that information.
I will. Thank you, Jen.
Under those conditions, do we have the option of asking the applicant to withdraw his request for a waiver or deny it or accept it?
Well, since you've already made the motion to deny, you do have to vote unless the second and the original motion are withdrawn.
Which, as the person making the motion, I would do if the applicant asked for a continuance to provide us the information that we're missing.
I can provide that information.
So I think what Ms. White is saying is?
That was Annie.
Ms. Collier.
This is Annie.
I'm sorry. Is that if we withdraw the waiver, if we withdraw the waiver request, we'd still have to provide the hydrogeological study?
Correct.
If the waiver request is denied by the board, we have to provide the hydrogeological study. If the board wants time to review the previously completed hydrogeological study and get additional input from their engineer or whomever, then I think you could deny the denial and then we could, there would have to be a motion to approve and that could wait till the next meeting. Am I incorrect in that?
You would have to withdraw the motion that's before the board right now. And then we can just continue the hearing for the waiver request to the next meeting. And they can supply additional information.
In order to continue it, does the applicant have to request that continuance or is that something that the planning board can do?
The applicant on the waiver and the overall site, if that comes to it, has to grant the continuance because you're past the 65-day clock.
So that's why I'm waiting for the applicant to ask to continue it?
You got to pull your motion first, Annie.
Annie, it's not up to them to do that. It's up to you to just withdraw.
I'm, no. What I'd like is to withdraw if the applicant wants to continue. But I'd like to hear that.
That's my problem to continue.
Okay, so I will withdraw the motion.
Okay, so the motion to withdraw, sorry, the motion to deny the waiver request has been withdrawn. And now?
So we will be requesting a continuance to, for the town engineer to review and to provide the additional information to the board.
Okay, and that's a hydrogeological study for this parcel relevant to the proposed subsurface disposal systems? I just want to make sure that what we get is pertinent to this project and that we're not receiving a hydrogeological study for a different parcel. Yes. Because what's likely could happen is the board could say, please provide a hydrogeological study for this project.
So to be clear, as mud, I guess, the waiver request is still in front of you to act on next time. So we either have to provide it or the board can either vote for or against.
Correct.
Right.
Perfect. So you're requesting continuance to the December 27 hearing or do you need more time?
Well, the other, December 27th or January 10th?
Or January 10th.
So I'm making the motion, and we're going to tie this all up in a bow, is that with the approval of a continuance upon that information being set, our engineer looking at these plans and going over them so that we can get his input and then we can discuss your waiver and read about what he has, the engineer has to say about these other items that Mr. Moran was talking about until that next meeting.
If I may, the ZBA is going to hear the variances on January 4th. Hopefully we'll get a vote on those. So I think it's important to go after that.
On January 10th, okay.
That's okay with the board. No, the next one, I think, was the 27th or something.
Yeah, it's December 27th or January 10th of the next meeting.
January 10th.
January 10th.
With those that I put in place.
Okay, so to just recap, Mr. Marshawn has a motion to continue the hearing for 27-3 until January 10th. So we are able to receive comments from the town engineer and inclusive of the drawings, the drainage report, as well as the hydrogeo study?
From the other thing, yeah. From 2007.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, I think that's right.
So I just want to, just so it's very clear, does the applicant agree to that continuance?
That's what I said.
Yes, we do.
He would have to agree to it, yeah.
Just covering bases.
Yeah. I don't think we opened the public hearing for the site plan just the waiver.
That is true. So if you want to allow some comment for that, since folks are here in the audience?
Sure. Does anybody have comments on the drawings that were provided by the applicant for the application?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Barbara.
This is Barbara. You voted in second, you motioned in second, but you didn't vote.
You want to withdraw those motions for the public hearing?
Bob, can you withdraw it? Withdraw it so that we can have a public hearing? Just a public comment?
We'll withdraw it and hold it for now, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you. Thanks. I'll withdraw as the second.
Does anybody from the audience have any comments on the drawings? In Zoom? Going once? Okay.
So my motion is in place.
My second is in place.
Thank you.
Call the roll.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Marshawn?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay, thank you. So second on the agenda is a continuation of 125 Development, New Hampshire Corp. of Plastile. New Hampshire's request for a public hearing for an amended site plan at 3, 5, 7, and 9 Puzzle Lane, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as tax map 14, Block 1, Lot 27-4. So general recap of this is that the, this application was originally provided to the planning board in September of 2022. There has been a few revisions of the drawing set. To kind of summarize this, this project was originally approved by the planning board, I believe in May of 2015. There were some deviations from what was approved. And the applicant is trying to, or is in the process of documenting those deviations and potentially having them approved by the planning board. We received updated drawings back in October and then subsequently drawings in the past week or so. Ms. Rowden and the town engineer went out there, was it Thanksgiving?
November 21st.
Thank you. Jen, do you have any comments on what was provided?
Sure. So I believe the board got the photo log from the site walk, Mike Vicnelli and I did, with Mr. McDonough and one of the tenants of the property. You also got a review letter from Mike based on that site walk. Subsequent to that, some revisions of the as-built were also submitted. So my overall comments are that the site, the as-built that was submitted most recently does appear significantly more accurate to what is on the site. There is some confusion with some of the submittal dates and I do highly recommend you require that be updated because it's starting to get, with all the drawings coming in, hard to keep track of which ones are which because there are multiple copies. There are some items that are on the as-built that are still some concerns. But the biggest ones, and these are in my letter, are recommended because there are some stormwater detention basins that are, that were on the original design that are clearly not on the site. Concurrent with Mike Vicnelli's comments that the board may want to require that a updated drainage analysis be conducted by a licensed engineer to determine if what is on site is adequate to meet your regulations or if it is deficient, what needs to be done to bring it into compliance. The second aspect is that the site had a few safety concerns. There are retaining walls in a few locations that were built that were not part of the original site plan. Most specifically, the retaining wall that's to the back of the building, that's at the edge of the fire lane. To have an engineer review the safety of that to take a look at it. Other aspects, there are small boulders along the edge of the pavement of the large parking area that should have been guardrail that do not appear sufficient to stop a vehicle if there were to be an out-of-control vehicle. It's quite a steep embankment. There's also a few holes. I'm sorry, there is one specific hole that is near the edge of the pavement that Mike noted is not actually a detention basin. It should be filled for safety reasons. It's a good-sized hole. At the site, there was blockage of the emergency access, or at least near blockage. I can't tell you if it was fully within the access. It was very close to it with temporary construction trailers and a few of the tractor trailers that were being stored on site. That's why I just commented that any approval should require that those not be stored there. At the site, it was discussed that because of the uses they have at those buildings, they don't really need as much parking as was originally approved. That makes actually a lot of sense. But we do need some information about where the parking is proposed to be that was not provided on the as-built. There is not striping there, so the as-built is accurate in that there is not striping. Putting in the striping where they want the parking and saying proposed striping, I think would get us to that, make sure that there is adequate vehicular circulation on the site and sufficient parking for their needs. The other item is that there is outdoor storage currently. Most of it looked like staging for the construction of the units and I'm sure Tom can speak to this. But just clarifying that there is not to be outside storage of materials with any of the uses that are on that site. That's been part of any of the amended site plans that have occurred when they've come in for change of uses. That has been a continual condition, but that should just be confirmed. It doesn't appear that there is materials being stored outside that are not related to the construction. being stored outside that are not related to the construction. So those are my big things. Generally, Mike Vicnelli had a similar vein through his letter. He had a few more specifics with some of the requirements to be on a plan, but those are our big recommendations.
Thank you. Jim, you wouldn't by chance have the notice of decision from Beck handy, would you?
As I said when you asked, which one do you want?
I was going to say the orig-, I know you sent me 12 of them, I believe.
I sent you all the notices of decision on this lot that I have.
Okay.
I didn't print them out. I can, if you want to take a quick recess.
No, that's okay. I don't particularly need them, but, um, does the board have any questions about what we have in front of us?
We have a lot in front of us, and a lot that bothers me.
You're looking for questions or comments at this point, Dennis?
You can go either way, Annie.
Okay, well, this is Annie. I have a comment. I'm very concerned about the stormwater and erosion statements, and I think it's very necessary to have the study of what is actually in place, to have those holes filled in, to have the safety items done, like the guardrail sufficient to stop a runaway vehicle. I think that the landscaping that was originally planned was to help erosion control down that steep slope, down to some of the butters, and that hasn't been done, and that's a big concern of mine. I'd like to make sure that a stormwater study is done that would say whether that is in fact needed to have, I think it was 104 trees, as opposed to maybe 12 that are up there. It's a big difference. I have some real concerns about that. Dennis, this is Barbara.
Yes, Barbara.
I agree with everything that Annie just said. I have those same concerns.
I, I share the same concerns as well. I also have questions of, we have drawings in front of us that are labeled as-built, but they're proposing certain items like future use. So, and again, it's like clarification on what is in front of the board, so 10 years from now, when I'm no longer doing this and we're all on vacation somewhere.
Dennis, you can't, you can't stop.
Oh, thank you, Eddie. That we can go back in history and try to figure out what decisions were made. So it's really difficult to go back when everything is dated the same date and is labeled as an as-built but has future stuff in here. And I understand, like, you don't know what's going to happen. You may change the sidewalk, but just clearer information for the board to look at now and review, our town engineer to review, and the public to understand what's going on.
Where do you see the future? Because I see a future dumpster pad, but that's the only one I saw.
There's a few other things. ADA spots are labeled ADA, but they're not ADA compliant.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I remember that.
Yep.
They are now.
They are now?
Yeah, they've all been paved. Everything's been done, yeah. Everything's been marked. Parking lots have been striped. ADA signs are up. Everything's done. There's a few little things left to do on the rock guardrail.
Okay.
I just, Tom Leckborg, Northern Constructors Agent for 125 Development, and I'm the builder. So, we've been working vigorously here, trying to get stuff done since the meeting, you know, with Mike. Unfortunately, I didn't make that. I was traveling, and a lot of things haven't been addressed. That's on, that's, that you requested, it was on the drawing, it's been done. We're 97% done. We have some new things that came up from Jen and from Mike. We're looking like the retaining wall behind building 9A. That was built five years ago. It was permitted by the building department, and it was inspected by the building department. And I would have to go back and see how that was designed. It's ages ago, in my opinion. The ponds, we haven't touched on the back, because we're still having kind of a question about that, and I didn't build them. Like, I can show you the drawing for that section.
This is just super difficult, because it's-
Right, I know, I know that, but what I'm saying is, I just want to explain it, because it looks like we just want to have them do what we didn't want to do. And this is the pond that we were talking about in the back. Temporary. So, that's the proof set from the planning board. Some questioning, I didn't put them in because I didn't see, you know, they were temporary. They were there at one time. They were far up in elevation beyond them, and I don't see how they would work sitting inside the wetland buffer zone at the 50-foot mark, which is marked right in the drawing. So, I, you know, I don't know, Dennis. I'm looking at this, and I'm like saying to myself, it's like, well, one, I don't know how it would work. I mean, we had Hardberry take a look at this, you know, for the drainage.
Tom, could you repeat what you said? Because when you were talking at the table-
Oh, I'm sorry.
-I didn't hear the thing you said.
I'm sorry. So, the two ponds behind building 9C, behind Sunny's, that's on the slope between the property of Jamie Fitzpatrick and ourselves.
Okay.
There's a slope there that's supposed to have two ponds in that turn there that are marked temporary sediment basins that we had in there as we were building the construction. It was just holding runoff water until we had something to grow in, and now they come under question because they're not there, and we're saying, well, it's a two-to-one slope. How would you install them? Where would you drain them to? Wherever the four bay be? Like, how would you, when they overfill, where would they go? So-
Okay, can I, can I say something? This is Barbara.
Yeah.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at the original landscaping plan-
Page three.
From 2015.
It's page-
And those two, those two places that you're talking about, they're labeled stormwater management. They're not labeled temporary ponds.
If you go-
So I think that they, they were supposed to be there, and I don't know what happened with the slope, but evidently, there wasn't a bad slope when those were designed to be there in the first place.
Ms. White, if you go to page three and look at page three, they're there too, and that's what, you know, that I was looking at when I was building it.
Have you looked at the drainage report?
Well, we're going to run them again now, so we're going to try to figure out how we're going to do this, because I'm a two-to-one slope, where am I going with that? And I've read, you know, Mike's comments.
I guess to that question, why was it designed without a retaining wall if it wasn't going to work?
I, you know, I agree with you. It was just like, you know, we come into the property, you start building, and we tore down a mountain, right? We flattened out a mountain, we filled the back end of the property, and as I get into it, we realized, you know, we need a slope that's far exceeds, you know, anything that's going to be stabilized. So we ended up putting a retaining wall, and we went for permit, and there was a lot of discussion when we did the retaining wall, because it went back and forth, and then it ultimately, the building inspector said, hey, I'll give you a permit for you to build it, and then that's how, that's how it went. And that's what I recall. I don't recall, you know, the whole thing, but, but the wall was designed and, and we built it, because we had to. There was no other way.
This is Barbara. Can I interject something? If you got the okay from the building department, you evidently didn't come back for an amended site plan at the time to build that wall in the first place, because we don't have any records of that, and you would have needed an amended site plan, because that wall was not on the original approval.
I agree, and we did not. You are correct. We went to the building department and asked for the building permit for it, because it was greater than four feet.
Can I make a comment, Coleman McDonough?
Yes.
These, these three small ponds, if you look at them, they're not close to the wetlands. They're not near the wetlands. They're on the wetlands. All three of those ponds, like, are like a foot off of the wetland delineation.
So are they on the wetland, or are they not in the wetland?
They are on the wetland line. If you look at, I believe it's L, it goes all the way around. It makes like a 90-degree bend. That is on the wetland line. It's at the toe of a three-to-one slope, and Dennis, you're an engineer. If, if that pond is collecting all of the water running off a three-to-one slope, and that pond fills up, where in that pond does it show the drainage and treatment when it's up butting, not near, it's on the wetland line? So how are you going to treat the water flow out of that pond that is on the wetland?
Ms. Rowden?
You go ahead. I can wait. One of the reasons that this application is before the board is because it was acknowledged that what was out on the site is not what was in full compliance with what was the original approval. The reason the, the plan says as-built is that was one of the requests of the board to have better documentation about what is out there. There are, in my opinion, some deficiencies of information of what is out there to meet your regulations, to have this site be in compliance with your regulations. I think to get to that end, having a, an updated drainage study to identify, maybe what's out there is sufficient. That would be, that would be great. Maybe there are some things that need to be improved, that it would also identify that. So I think if the, the goal is to bring this site into compliance and understand what is out there, whether what was supposed to be built or was temporary for a drainage basin, they're not there. Maybe something needs to be there. Maybe something else needs to happen, because you can't put a detention basin there. So-
Can I make a, can I make a comment to Jen's? We've retained Jones and Beach to do the drainage calculations and do the study for the drainage calculations, and I agree with Jen in several aspects. Number one, the ponds might not be needed. Number two, they're at the toe of a three-to-one slope. Number four, they're not treated, and they go right on the wetland line, which the rules and regulations are 50 feet off of the wetland, no construct, and that they're not treated going into the wetlands. And, like, you know, I would think that it would be bad building practice to go into the winter without any germination and constructing these ponds, when we're going to hire Jones and Beach, and the three ponds that are on the wetlands might not even need to be installed, number one. And two, even Mike Vicnelli on his site visit had, had made the comment that these ponds might have to be relocated if they're needed. As far as the retaining wall, Dennis Nato, who was the building inspector, inspected that retaining wall. I think that there was a small bust in the topography from civil design in a couple of different areas, and even Mike, when, when he made a couple of visits out there, between riprap and, and the slope, it even says, if needed, you know, that riprap will be placed if you can't achieve a three-to-one slope. And we pulled, we pulled a building permit, and Dennis Nato inspected every aspect of that retaining wall, and it's been in there for five years. It's got Geo Matt, and he approved it, and I, you know, after five years, I can't believe that we're questioning the integrity of the wall that was inspected by your building inspector. All of the boulders that were small boulders have been replaced. All the, all of the handicap striping has been painted, other than the temporary office trailers that Turner Motors Sports agree that when they do their tenant fit-up, they will be removed. As far as their location, we, we can provide you with a letter from the fire chief, who has come out and done a site, a site visit, and approved what, where they are geographically placed right now for safety, for the fire trucks to get around. As far as this hole, which I consider a pond, we go back to, I'm using, you know, good practice, in that, do you want to fill a pond with fill and loom going into the winter without having germination of grass? I didn't do it. It's germinated. There's growth. It's not eroding. There's no breakout. So in the springtime, you know, I had full plans to fill that pond when, when we're in the germination season, and it doesn't have all kinds of runoff into the other ponds with snow and ice and frost and rain. But, again, everything, everything, everything on Mike's plan has been approved, and the storage has been marked. Everything that's been requested has been done. We've, we're going to hire Jones and Beach, and we were looking to see if, if you could take a vote on possibly posting surety with the, with the proposal of the drainage, to see if Will Turner could close on his building. It's been almost a year now.
So I guess to recap my opinion, and this is my opinion, it's not necessarily the board's. If this was built how it was originally approved, we wouldn't necessarily be here. And I understand there's deviations, but I'm looking at what was just in front of us and half an hour ago, and infiltration basin number three is within feet of the wetland. So if that's a concern, and I know I'm mixing topics, maybe this should be revisited later. And we're trying to work with the applicant to move this forward, but I don't know what surety amount I would be comfortable with, or the board would be comfortable with, to guarantee that. I, I don't know what the drainage report's going to say. So if there, and there's other outstanding items out there, the vegetation screening that was proposed and approved before has not been constructed as originally approved. And although the building inspector may have approved the wall, I don't know. That still needs to be approved by the planning board, and there's other aspects of the site that it was cleared much further than we originally approved to the west, plan north. And I think we're a fairly reasonable board. If what is in front of us, and we approve what's in front of us, is what's constructed, we don't have a problem with it. And if there is a minor deviation, that can be approved and amended. But, as you said, it's been there for five years. The retaining wall was a point. You've had five years to come here to get that approved. And that's how projects like this, in my experience, typically work. We're in front of planning boards on behalf of developers or IM to amend site plans almost monthly for projects of this size. And that's my opinion. I'm not sure if anybody else on the board has any other comments.
May I make a comment, Dennis, to, to what you just said? Number one, you have to have, which is like top, the top, the topic is safety. There's a 26-foot roadway. How do you get in between a building and, and make a 26-foot roadway without the wall? The building inspector inspected it. I mean, one would think, as he inspects it, he was making his inspection that if, if he needed, you know, a permit or, you know, we, and we could have paid for an additional permit. I'm not sure. This is back five years ago. None of the board members that sit on the board right now or have, have been on the board for this- board for this length of time. When this project was approved, and I've made this statement before, that we came in, into a meeting and it was agreed that the species of tree that was designed on this plan, it would not live in this region. And we had this full discussion that we took native trees that when we were building the drainage pond, going back to Seven Puzzling, we took the existing native trees and filled in the line of sight on Sergeant Woods and also in Walnut Farms when we did the three-to-one cut on that slope. Everything was filled in. We showed Mike McNally on the sidewalk, Jen, that we took hundreds of trees and off of these two areas and planted them in to block the line of sight was the big concern of all the neighbors. The trees that were on the plan, even the nurseries said, we'll sell them to you, Coleman, but they're not going to grow. We'll guarantee that they'll die. And that was all addressed. And, you know, we, we, we had this meeting like years and years ago, like 10 years ago. And that's what was done. So hence, that's why the species of trees weren't planted, you know, in the exact location of, of the plant.
I guess I have no further comments. I'm not sure if anybody else on the board has.
I mean, I'm, I'm.
Sorry, go ahead.
I'm looking with the, one of the pictures of the retaining wall. And from my perspective, I'm seeing the whole second, third tier of block starting to shift out towards the road. So obviously, there is something going on with the water runoff there that's creating a lot of pressure on that wall and pushing that wall out. And that's why I believe Mr. McNally mentioned something about that retaining wall and the issue with it. And I would also like to second what Dennis said. The whole thing is, when these plans and you come in and these get addressed to the board and you go out there and you're going to put these plans into motion, right? You have times and dates. My father was a contractor. So you have dates to keep, things to do. The trees that you just put in over by Mr. Fitzgerald's place, those were supposed to be in a long time ago, but yet they were just recently installed, okay? These things, like Dennis said, if they were done when they were supposed to be done and they were done the way they were supposed to be done when you came to the board, this whole transition would have been smooth. Mr. Turner would have already bought the property from you and what you would be doing now is coming to us, asking for a slight, a site plan adjustment to change the plans so it would suit his needs and his desires. We are trying to work with you to get this done so that you can have your piece of the pie, Mr. Turner can have his. So we need some cooperation here and I'm not going to sit here and just keep passing the buck on this and keep playing the game to where we're going to keep kicking this can down the road. So these things need to get addressed properly, they need to be dealt with, and then when they are dealt with in a proper manner, then we can take this whole situation to where everybody will be satisfied with it and we can move forward with it. And that's where I stand with it.
So the first step is to get an updated drainage study, correct?
So that is, Mr. Lavoy asked, what is step one? His question was, is the first step to get an updated drainage study? So the applicant has a proposal, and I'm not sure, I guess I, it's, I'm indifferent either way, that Jones and Beach will perform a drainage analysis of the existing and as-built conditions in accordance with state and local regs. Study will compare the peak runoff rates in compliance with the approved site plans. And I guess my opinion would be that this would be backdated to the regulations of 2015 or whenever we approved it.
2015, yeah.
Ms. Rowden.
Sorry, lost my train of thought. I'll, I'll come back to it.
Okay. So that may say it's totally fine, nothing needs to be done, or it may say you need some additional treatment, the parking lot's been expanded, you need additional infiltration basins, they need to be constructed on the site, it's going to cost X dollars to build this.
At that point, given that information, we could consider a bond, I would think. But at this point, with no information, it's premature.
I would agree with you, Annie. Ms. Rowden, sorry.
If the drainage analysis were to come back and say you need additional treatment, you would want to know what design would also be proposed so that you would have, A, an idea of any bonding that might be considered, but also how it would impact the rest of the site. Where would it be located? What would be the design? What would be the infrastructure?
Yes.
So that, there are two, I don't know the details of the contract the applicant has with Jones and Beach, if it includes that aspect, but if it isn't sufficient drainage, that would be the next step of that topic.
Yes, and I would assume that this is based on the existing conditions survey, which we have an as-built plan. It does not appear to be, have topography on what's in front of me, but that would probably have to be updated and included so Jones and Beach can properly analyze where water is moving on the site. Jim.
Just a point of reference.
Mr. Chair, oh, I, Mr. Chair, I have a question. Have we taken jurisdiction of this?
We, we have not.
I didn't think so.
Yes, Jim.
Oh, I just want to make sure I got, have this right. You said that the drainage analysis would be made in accordance with the standards that were in place in 2000?
At the time it was applied for and approved, there probably has been some changes.
There have been some changes.
So it would be, at least in my professional opinion, unfair to the applicant to have to design the originally approved areas to the current standard. Now, if they deviated from that for additional impervious area, AKA the parking lot to the west that has since been expanded, I would say that that area would have to meet current regulations. But I also don't know how the Alteration of Terrain Bureau feels about, there is a process for an amended alteration of terrain permit. I'll, I'll just state that.
So you're talking about the parking lot that's northwest of the property, nine C at the rear? Where the, where the septic system is?
Yes, or, or any area that has differed from the ground coverage that was currently or previously approved.
So it's a pervious area? I mean, we don't, it's not a paved area?
The gravel is considered impervious by AOT and by.
It's crushed concrete.
The curve number is totally different.
Okay.
They'll deal with that.
So you're going to go with the 2022 regs on the parking lot?
I would think that's a reasonable area, a reasonable assumption.
I would recommend that any drainage reports calculate what the impervious surface square footage for the original proposal was and then identify the square footage of any new impervious surface that has been created that includes gravel. Because if it, if it's below a certain threshold, it may not trigger what normally would be your new stormwater requirements simply because of the small size of it. And then I would go from that information for a recommendation.
And then Mike McNally and the board can review what comes, I guess.
So are we not taking jurisdiction?
Can we have public comment without taking jurisdiction of the?
You can. It's not technically part of the public hearing, but you can take public comment.
Okay.
I have one more question, if I could, before you do public comment. The last statement from Mr. McNally on the parking lot lighting, is that, is that a concern to anyone? I don't, I don't know. If so, we should address that as a part of our statements to the applicant, that, that needs to be done so that it can come up later.
Okay.
Can I answer that? So the reason we have less, we run less and less because of all the complaints from Sergeant Woods.
I personally don't have a problem with the lack.
Right, so we have, instead of having all the poles at their, at their property line that we're supposed to have, we have ball packs instead. And all lighting is supposed to be, you know, during the nighttime, we shut everything off at 9:30 now because, I mean, the never-ending complaints with the building department, with the code, code enforcement. So that's why we are where we're at. There's plenty of lighting there, there's nobody there really any time after seven, 7, eight o'clock anyway, so.
Yeah, I, I don't think.
That's not an issue, right?
I don't think the lighting's.
Because it'll be an uproar if it starts.
I wanted to make sure that it wasn't, so it wasn't something that came up later.
Do they have to ask for a waiver for a reduction?
Technically, yes. I don't have concerns about the lighting as well. The only thing is knowing where the parking is going to be to ensure that there is adequately lit space for where you're wanting the parking to actually be. I can't tell where they want all of the parking. It's kind of logical when you're out there, but on this proposal, it's not indicated where they're planning to have parking.
Okay, unfortunately, but it is striped now, the parking is there and it is in a lit, lit section. Because it's very, it's very little. 18 spaces, I believe, and one handicap for that. And that's really all there is there. Everything else is like three here and two there.
Just wanted to remind you that one of the occupants in their change of use applications stated at certain times of the year that they would be running 24/7.
That's Munter's. That was approved, yeah. But if they're there, the lights have, you know, they're automatic, so if someone comes out, the turn on. Yeah. I don't, I think, I don't think that's an issue with them. It's the pole lights in the perimeter. That's the issue with Sergeant Woods because they're that much lower. And I, even if at a, at a 30-degree shade, I can't shade it, I can't make the lights stream down. And the same with Walnut Farm coming up off the lights, even though they're that high. Not, not Mr. Fitzpatrick's house, but two down from him, they, they, they made complaints for our, down by Halo. So we've also adjusted all that, so. So that's why it's a sensitive issue with us and the neighbors. I'd like to do a waiver for it if we could.
That would, I think, something that the board could easily be amendable to. I, I think the, the larger items are that retaining wall, the drainage analysis, vegetation screening. Am I missing anything?
I think that's it.
The boulders?
The, the boulders, the parking detail. If the boulders have been replaced.
90%.
Then I would recommend bringing in photos to, to show that. I do think the strapping with the parking to show that location. There were a few items with sidewalks. Also confirmation that the storage that is out there is.
Construction.
For construction. I would like that note actually changed on the plan to conform with that, just so that there isn't outdoor storage of any of the companies that are in there. So I think there's a few things that are more note-related or small details, but they are important for this site so you can understand what is going on. And so it also allows the flexibility that I know they need with the kinds of uses that they're seeking to have.
And that retaining wall needs to be looked at, too.
We will, we'll take a look at it.
Yeah, she mentioned that.
Now, like Coleman said, the construction trailers are there, they're only there waiting for this to close out and then we'll build the interior returner and then everything that will leave, that's there, so. It's just temporary. But they have permits, they have electrical permits on them, fire department has approved them there. So, I mean, that's, that's been quite a while now, two years.
My concern was actually more of the tractor trailers being stored near that emergency access rather than the construction trailers.
I will make sure that they don't keep anything in the lane, but we just get, they just got interior doors here, so the, all that stuff actually goes inside right now as it intended to do.
And I'll confirm that Mr. Turner did state that to me at their site, at the sidewalk.
Those trailers are $3 million each. They don't want them outside.
So as far as a pathway forward to close this out.
Are you no longer offering public comment?
I will.
Okay.
So maybe I should hold my statement.
Why don't we do public comment? Because everyone's been sitting here for a while, just in case.
I will do the audience first, if anybody from the audience has any comments. Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Jamie Fitzpatrick, 15 Walnut Farm Road. So I've heard a number of comments about the longevity of the board and who's been around, who's not been around. I've been around with this in my backyard since it started. So a quick history, really quick. We bought our properties on Walnut Farm with a 200-foot setback. The plans originally came to this board. The board confirmed the 200-foot setback and went to the ZBA. The ZBA did a walkthrough, made a compromise and made a 90-foot setback. The developer has gotten the benefit of every foot of that 90-foot setback and arguably then some. Every foot of it, they put up a building using those regulations and, and those rules based upon the zoning board. All power to them, all correct. At the same time, their agreement was, when the planning board made the final plans, there would be a screen. It wasn't just for soil erosion, it was to screen the property. By the prints that I have that I've been given by this office, there's 59 trees that are supposed to be behind that building. As of September, there was 14. September this year, though, should have been done, I think Mr. Marshon referenced that, that was, should have been done a number of years ago. There were 14. I watched the building be built, it's in my backyard. There were no hundreds of trees put up behind that building and moved from other areas of that lot. Did not happen. So I would strongly urge the board not to waive the requirements. So the, the Walnut Farm people lived with the decisions that were made. Rant and rave, we didn't protest, we didn't try to cause all kinds of problems. 90-foot setback was granted, that benefited the developer. What was granted to us was a vegetation screen and this board should uphold that decision. The developers benefited from their share of that decisions. We should have ours and this board should uphold that and not waive that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick. Anybody else from the audience that's in front of us?
Could I, could I make a comment to that? My, my name's Coleman McDonough.
Can we hold for the rest of the public comment, please?
Okay.
Thank you. Doug, you had your hand raised for a few minutes.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
I'd like to point out, between two and three years ago, I'm, I'm guessing this discussion is about the retaining ponds between Sunny's and the Woodland Road in Sergeant Woods. Is that, am I correct?
Can you give me a reference like north, southeast, west of the building? Sorry.
I'm going to guess west.
Okay.
Woods the roadway in Sergeant Woods, which is called Woodline. The chairman of our grounds committee at the time was Jerry Cotrally. He pointed out that there was a breach in the backside of that retainer wall that caused some debris to come down into the, into the sides of the roadway on our side of the property. And it was reported to the building inspector at the time and I believe the situation was corrected. But there was sediment that had come down into the Sergeant Woods area and into the waterways. And I just wanted to bring up that point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the comment. The Woodland Road is right here, so it's the southwest side. The Woodland Road is right here, so it's the southwest side. Ms., sorry, Jim.
I was just gonna say, if it would benefit the board in their next board package, I can put the original site plan, landscaping plan, and notices of decision, if you'd like.
I think that would be very beneficial for us.
That would be great.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. McDonough.
I'm commenting on the next-door neighbor that just spoke, James Fitzpatrick. The 90-foot setback was in place when Mr. Fitzpatrick bought his lot in Sergeant Woods. I spent almost a half a day with Mr. Fitzpatrick, showing him the heights of the building, the location of the building. As Jim gives you the plans, there is not one tree on the plan that got approved that's in the line of sight for Mr. Fitzpatrick's house. So, we had several meetings with Mr. Fitzpatrick, and both him, myself, and Tom Leckburg, and he agreed to these 14 trees being planted, which is, when those trees come to growth, they'll have a full blockage of the line of sight from his house. It was agreed, back when Chanti was the building inspector, he knew about it. We did have a little delay because we were in the biggest drought ever this summer, as far as planting them. We planted them all, we spent about $14,000, $15,000 planting them to suffice Mr. Fitzpatrick. But again, if you look on the existing plan, there is not one tree to be planted on the plan that blocked any line of sight for Mr. Fitzpatrick. So, out of the goodness of my heart, and along with his approval on the location, all of these trees were planted. If he doesn't like them, we'll be glad to rip them out and relocate them.
I'm looking at the approved plan from May of 2015, that's dated May 7, 2015, that was approved by the town of Newton Planning Board. And I disagree with that statement. I'm looking at a proposed landscape earthing berm, 50-foot undisturbed buffer, that is probably the length of the building that's offset to the east. So, I, I'm not sure exactly what that says, and it does show the 90-foot structural setback and the 50-foot wetlands setback, and the emergency access that is in place.
Dennis, I'd be more than happy to take the original set of plans and meet you out there on-site and show you what we planted in addition to appease the line of sight for Mr. Fitzpatrick. Again.
I think I'm looking at what was approved. It's signed and recorded at the registry of deeds. If there's a more recent one that was approved that changed that, I'm personally unaware of it, but.
You really have to go out to the site?
I'm looking at the plan that was approved.
Okay. Yeah, there's a three-to-one slope, so if there's additional trees that they want to plant, you know, he probably won't even see the top of them.
I wonder, this is Annie, I wonder if there's anything in writing saying exactly what was agreed to. Was it six-foot trees? Is it trees which are due to grow to be 20 feet in 10 or 15 years? I mean, what was it that was actually agreed to? And, you know, was that brought to us to say this was okay? Or is it being brought to us now to say, you know, will we approve this as built? I think there's just some open questions that are not answered in this whole, in this whole thing. And it's our job, it's our job to make sure we protect all the applicant according to what is legal and allowed in our regulations, and to protect our abutters and residents. So, it needs, there needs to be a balance here, and we need more information.
To answer Ms. Collier's question, simply because if you look at the signature on that sheet, it might look familiar. The landscaping plan lists not only specific species of trees, but they had to be between six and, I believe, 12 feet tall, and exactly where they were to be planted, certain clustering, which was indicative of native plant, where you'd find plantings in nature. And it is a landscaping plan that was supplied by the applicant, and it was reiterated on the most recent applications and notices of decision regarding this piece of property, that the applicant would fulfill the landscaping plan as required and recorded.
And that was in 20, what we heard in 20?
2019 and 2020. And I believe in 2021, I believe all three.
Do you have another comment, Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Yes, I won't get into a back-and-forth, I'll just get some statements of fact. If you look at the timelines when this first got brought in, and you look at what the setbacks were, you will find that they were, in fact, 200 feet. You will find that the planning board, when you check the records, did, in fact, grant the 200 feet. And you will see that it went to the ZBA, and it was changed to 90-foot. And I know, I lived here through all of that. So, I want to make that point clear. I will validate that I did have a number of meetings with Mr. Leckburg and with Mr. McDonough. Not once, not ever, did I say, "Just make sure I'm covered and ignore the rest of the street. Don't worry about the other 59 trees, just give me some for me." Didn't happen. All I've ever said is, "There should be plantings." The one adjustment I did say would be nice, from the perspective of walnut farm people, were evergreens as opposed to leaf trees, because there's leaf coverage in the summer, and it's blinding in the winter with the silver roof. I'm just not gonna get back into the back-and-forths. Check the records, the facts speak for themselves.
Any other public comment?
I don't see any other public comment. Jim, do you have?
I do want to say, if the applicant is seeking to amend the vegetation plan, obviously, they've put what has, is out on the site, I'll confirm that those 14 trees are there. They can do that, was part of this. If they don't want to conform, then that's a discussion the board can come up with, but it's not necessary for them to provide an updated landscape plan for accepting of jurisdiction of this amended plan. There are other things for jurisdiction of accepting this plan that I think you're considering. A site walk on the site may be useful if we get to a complete application specifically for the vegetation aspect, if that is still coming up as a concern or an issue.
Okay.
I don't think we're there yet, but.
So, if the applicant wishes to amend what was previously approved for the vegetation screening, then they could?
They could propose that as part of their material that they have before you right now.
Should we do that in writing?
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, I just want to refute one thing with Jamie, it's like, he's saying he's gotten the 14 trees, that's not true. I did plant 14 trees in front of his property, square to it. Further up on the property, going along to his neighbors' houses, I personally planted the trees there, they were only sapling small, because of the slope of the angle, they're probably 10 feet tall right now, and there's well north of 75, 80, up on the hill, and Mike Vignelli, you know, he looked at them. So, they're there, they're all, they're all young trees, they don't fit the whole rest of the, you know, the forest was there, there was no evergreen right there. There might be a few big, real tall ones, but everything that's small, than 10 feet and down, we planted. And they planted, it was for soil stabilization at the top.
And that's in, you know, and I'll hold my comment.
Yeah, anyway, we'll ask for some kind of adjustment, to make sure that they're happy, too, so, you know, there's gotta be some give and take here.
I will say, being there on the site with no leaf on at all, from the property of this site, from the back of the building, I could only really make out one or two houses through the vegetation that was there. What was planted, what was not planted, I can't confirm, except for those 14 trees, but it was difficult to see the houses from that, from that vantage point. I don't know from the abutters' properties.
Mr. Fitzpatrick's tree, house is the one that's the most seen, just because of the nature, he's a little further back, and he's further down. The neighboring are actually quite a bit higher, so.
Bless you.
Just, Ms. Rowden mentioned that she couldn't see the houses very well. Anybody on the board is welcome to stand in our backyards and look at the building, and you will find that it doesn't work in reverse. And the screening was there for the benefit of our houses to screen the building. And Mr. Leckburg, I'd be glad to go out and look at those trees with you.
Absolutely.
I, I don't know where they are, and, because they don't appear to be across the building to me, but be glad to go out and look at it with you.
They're not sitting in line in the ones you have now, they're at the property, up top, all the way off, you can see all.
You can't be heard!
Sorry. I guess I'll make an appointment with Mr. Fitzgerald again, and we'll go out and visit the trees. And I'll point out to him what hasn't, hasn't been done, but we'll bring him writing to make an amendment.
I think that would be helpful, and if there is some agreement or conversation that the abutters agree to a change, or what they prefer, I think it would be beneficial if the abutters came here and spoke.
Right.
Reiterated, so there's both sides of the score.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they all want an evergreen, they don't want any leafy, because that doesn't work, so.
I, I don't know exactly what was approved before, so if there was.
Leafy, yeah.
Deciduous and evergreens, and, I think I flipped that around, but.
So, I appreciate the fact that in the letter, there was a suggestion about a bond, maybe posting some money to maybe hasten this whole process and get it moved forward. However, with the amount of work that still needs to be done, and not being able to put a dollar amount on it, at this point, I am not ready to take ownership of this, and I wouldn't, because I wouldn't be able to put a set amount on the bond that I would be happy with the board, the town having, in order to make sure that all the proper work got done and taken care of. So, I'm going to, at this point, make a motion not to take jurisdiction of this until some more of this work gets done, and that we have a better picture of the fact that everything's better intact.
Jim, did you have something?
Just two things, one, just a point of reference, normally you make motions that are in the affirmative, however, you, you simply don't have to take jurisdiction, you can continue. The other was, sorry, it went completely out of the top of my head.
Annie, do you have?
I don't have, no, I'm, I don't have anything. I just assume that it gets continued. Does the applicant have to ask for that continuance, or do we just continue it at this point?
Well, because we didn't take jurisdiction.
I would, if you want to continue it, I would make a statement that you're wanting to continue it until such time that the materials as cited, and you can use my letter and Mike Vignelli's letter, are fulfilled, just so that there's a list of the things that you are looking for in addition to.
Right.
What was discussed this evening.
All right, so I'll make a motion to continue it, conditioned on meeting what Ms. Rowden's and Mr. Vignelli's letters stated, correct?
I would say that, and the additional information discussed this evening.
Yes.
Second. What we didn't have.
Are you choosing?
Yeah, can we get a date?
What date works for you?
Can we chart Barry's 10th enough for you to?
Is that the 27th or the 10th of January?
The 10th?
We're figuring that out.
We're figuring that out right this second, so the, so I'm gonna continue it until the 10th.
10th of?
January.
Just a quick request to the board, if this is gonna be continued, would it be possible to do a non-certified notification to the abutters on Walnut Farm?
Yes. I know it's been.
I'd like to, I'd like to say that there is a public hearing of the budget for the school, scheduled for the 10th, so there is a conflict on that night. The school budget public hearing, I believe, is at 6 o'clock, but I'm not sure what's being publicly noticed. Can we, can we choose a different date?
I don't know if we.
I don't think we can.
Yeah, the, the next date would be the 24th of January.
That's very far.
And that's too far.
Can we, can we, can we meet on a different day? Could we meet on the 9th of January, for instance?
I'm confused, why's the school board getting to do a planning board?
Well, there, I'm, I happen to be on the budget committee.
Oh.
With the school. Members of the public might want to come to a budget committee meeting. Mr. Fitzpatrick, who is an abutter, who's been very concerned, is, serves on the school budget committee, there is some conflict.
I don't know exactly how we handle that.
I mean, you guys can certainly move your meeting if you choose to, you will need to change the original motion to the previous application, if that's your intention.
Is there a board?
Dennis, could I say something?
Yes, Ms. Rowden.
This is Barbara.
Yep.
Yep. I think we have to make sure, before we choose an alternate date, to make sure that we're not conflicting with the selectmen's meeting or any other meeting that might be happening in the hall.
That's my concern right now, is that we're kind of just changing meetings, and I totally understand where you're coming from, Annie, and I don't want to double-book people.
And that's my comment, Annie, because you're coming into where the town financing and all of that, and having the extra meetings will be coming up, as far as the selectmen in the town with everything. So, as far as the planning board goes, I get it that the schools have in their meetings, but we can't always alter our meetings because of something like that, and we also have to take into consideration the client that's before us with his proposal.
I'm just looking for a date that will work for everyone. I'm not looking to inconvenience anyone, I'm looking to accommodate everyone. The school budget is a $39 million budget, and it's about 75 to 80% of our taxpayers, our local taxpayers' annual property tax, so it's a huge concern, and it's not something to just kind of throw away and just say, "Oh, well, it's just a meeting."
Well, we're, we're a $200 million project. We keep waiting and waiting and waiting, and other things, too, so, I mean, it happens. I get it, I have sympathy for people, but we need to move on, thank you.
I'm suggesting to see if we can find a date that might be earlier, not later. I'm not looking to postpone, you want me to just find an alternate.
I'd say we keep the 10th.
Can we, can we have a motion that if we continue to the first meeting in January, date to be determined?
No, you have to do a date in time.
Do you have a chance to look at the calendar? Do you have a chance to look at the calendar?
No, you need a date and time certain for the continuance for noticing.
Right.
Okay, well then do it on the 10th.
Can we take a quick head count to how many people here on the planning board can make the 10th? We have enough for a quorum, Annie, to hold it on the 10th.
Go for it.
Although I do appreciate your comment and unfortunately, I don't think we can appease everybody.
Yeah, I appreciate your concern, but like I said, there's all kinds of things going on this time of year, so.
One of the people on Zoom has their hand raised.
Do we want to wrap up the motion?
You have a motion and a second.
Yes.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, there's, who was the second?
I did.
No, you made the motion.
Annie was the second.
I made the motion.
Oh, sorry about that.
Right, I made it. I think it was me. What?
You ready to vote?
Yes, wait for roll call.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye, with the understanding that it is enough for a quorum.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
That unanimous.
We will see you gentlemen on the 10th.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just remembered what I, the comment I wanted to make to let Mr. Mashon know that the board doesn't determine the price of the bonds. We usually ask the town engineer and other experts to give us costs based on actual knowledge of it.
No. I got it. Thank you. Before everybody leaves and we're switching to board business, I wanted to just add a comment to the agenda. I received some feedback from the general public about how fast our meetings are posted on YouTube or publicly available. I'm looking into it because I know some people are looking to take off, so.
Did you want an additional notice to go out for January 10th?
Yes, please. Non-certified, just a general mailer saying?
That requires a vote.
Oh, general mailer, okay. I'll make a motion to circulate a general notification. Then I'll second it.
Just a question, can we email that too? Is that a possibility? Is that?
As a courtesy, you certainly can. I believe Jim does let a few people know when agendas are posted, but you could certainly, people request to ask Jim to notify them.
I'm just looking for efficiency and...
And just so people know, by the way, if you go on the town's website, you can receive emails about planning board meetings. And then you'll tap on read more and it'll pop up and it'll tell you what's on the agenda. So just in case anything, you can read it and you don't have to show up and waste your time if nothing's going to pertain to you. But if you look at it and it's something that might interest you or might be in your neighborhood or a concern of yours, then you certainly would have the knowledge, the date, the time to whether you'd be able to Zoom or come in person to the meetings.
That is updated on Thursday prior to the planning board meeting.
Yep.
And with exception of the last one, I usually put up a fresh one on Monday, but that was just to delete an item and so. Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
That unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
You going to do a mail or do we owe any more NIPRA funds again or?
I own, I...
It's not a significant amount of money. We probably don't...
Just want to make sure this is open because a lot of people are going in our office for the...
It's approximately $96, but I do need a new set of la, I, I don't generate labels.
Okay, can you email the end of that and she will get it for you?
Or you can let her know in the morning because I won't be back until Thursday.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you for coming, gentlemen.
Yes, Annie?
I, I have to leave. Thank you very much, folks. Have a good rest of your evening and happy holidays.
Thank you, Annie. Have a great holiday.
Thank you. Same to you, Annie.
So next we have accept, so dropping Annie at 3 of 9.
Yep.
8:57.
Thank you. Acceptance of the meeting minutes.
I make a motion to accept.
Second. The 9th of November. Excuse me, who seconded? Mark.
Thank you. Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
Next, we have two NIPRA manifest to approve. One is a refund for four applications for the total of $1,037.99. So this is money back to residents, basically.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. This is Barbara.
Mr. Piper, BPQ Barbara, sorry.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
Thank you. Next one is...
And the next one is the expense NIPRA manifest for $937.01. A majority of it goes to our good friend, Ms. Rowden.
Approved.
To be clear, it goes to my office.
Now, it goes to Rock and Paper Scissors.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
That unanimous.
Next is the update on the CIP. I think that's why Annie left.
No, that's the one I said he, he had none.
Yeah, I withdrew it, but I can just give a quick update. Mark is still working on getting, not me, Mark, other Mark.
Okay.
Our town administrator is working on getting further feedback on that, so no update as of yet, but we should have one in January.
You should, yeah, you should be getting it soon. And I asked Mr. Piper that you be included when he disperses it so that you'll be, the three of you will be in on the loop.
Thank you.
Mr. Guide sends his best from the Bruins game.
That's great.
Next is update on the land use chapter of the master plan.
Yep, so we closed the survey back on November 20th. I left it open a couple of days later than we had originally talked about. We had a total of 55 respondents, which isn't a huge number admittedly, but it's more than probably would have come to a meeting with the planning board.
Did you say 55?
55, yeah.
Oh.
You'd had about 450 when we did the overall master plan survey. That did also talk about land use items. This was just a referring back to it, getting a little bit more feedback. The overall comments were arranged between for things you like, what you'd like to see more of, what you'd like to see less of. Really liking the natural resources, wanting to have uses that were generally more small-town feel. Some people want absolutely no more construction. Some people want more multifamily and some more commercial, generally on the lighter use sort of commercial industrial than more commercial per se. That is a very big overview of a couple of comments. I was going to summarize them into the chapter, give you the draft goals that we've sort of discussed in the past. And then when you are ready, and we can do this at the 27th, I'll have time to sort of summarize that for that date. Once you're ready, if you're comfortable with it, we can work on moving it to public hearing and putting it as part of your master plan and move on to the next chapter, which will be housing.
Thank you, Jennifer.
And just really related, we are finishing up the drafting for the housing opportunity grants that we've talked about in the past so that towns will be able to apply to do that master plan work from that granting fund in January. So I'll have that for you at an upcoming meeting.
Thanks.
Good.
Last is Jim has updated our policies and procedure manual.
Correct.
Thrilling.
Excuse me?
It was thrilling.
I bet it kept you awake until you got to the very last page. I apologize, the copies that you got in your packets, what, the, some of the changes, new verbiage that I added was in kind of a grayscale whereas the one that I sent out originally as a, a file that I emailed, it was red.
I actually prefer the red.
Excuse me?
It was easier for me to look at, see the changes.
Yep.
In the redline version, yes.
I just, it would have wiped out my red cartridge and, sorry, we're getting to the end of the year and budgets are tight. So anyway, if in the next couple of weeks, people review it, have any questions, which they can send directly to me, I would like to put it on the 27th for discussion for possibly, I'm not certain if the land use, I'd like to wrap it in so that I only do one ad for the land use and the policies and procedures manual and maybe even wrapping in the CIP. Because it, because it's in flux, it's, it's basically sort of in effect. People sort of have to follow it.
I think talk to Mark, but yeah, I think that should be possible.
It just, it, it saves on our budgets and some of us do try.
Okay.
The land use chapter should be certainly good enough for you to review whether you're comfortable moving to public hearing. You'll have to be the judges of that. I think you will be, but.
Yeah, and that does not have to go on where our...
No, that's just a public hearing.
Okay, perfect.
That you guys hold at a regular meeting.
I just, I mean, I look at the, the, the cost of an ad. It's actually, one larger ad is a lot cheaper than three individual ones.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Well, the next thing's going to cost you a little bit more.
This is Barbara. Can I make a comment?
Yes, absolutely.
I think that Jim did a yeoman's job of putting all the updates in this. I mean, I think he did a really good job. I only have one request that you say, that you put planning board policies and procedures on the front cover.
Versus the zoning board?
Oh.
No, planning board. It's, no, it doesn't say anything right now. It just says policies and procedures, but it should say planning board policies and procedures.
That's fair.
Oh, okay. Because yes, eventually I, I would like to see the two boards merge there. We now have a planning board book and a ZBA flyer. The ZBA is getting their stuff together, but I'd like to have it all condensed into one master document. Still, if you read through and you spot anything, I picked up all the typos, all the grammatical problems, and there's a lot of change of verbiage. One of the things that I also did is with the green cards going away, the return cards from certified mailings, I'm recommending that you reduce the cost for the additional abutters from $100 back down to, down to 50.
Yeah, I saw that.
After we just suggested to increase it?
Yeah.
Well, technically, we're not supposed to make money. We just charge people taxes.
Yeah. Which is a public notice due on Thursday.
And if you noticed on the, I've shifted just about everything that I could think of to applicants for then they will now pay for, may sound not very petty, but $3.10 every time I have to take batches of mailings for people to the post office. There's no reason the town should have to pay a travel expense to me. That's applicant-based. There are several, I'm going to do a list of all the, all the cost shifts that I've And the only other thing that I had for the agenda is in order to retain documents according to the state, and as you know, I'm on the Public Records Retention Committee for the Town of Newton. In order to retain them electronically, certain ones, actually anything we retain, has to be as a PDF-A file, which requires a copy of Adobe Pro. I was originally, I'm asking the, the board to encumber $240 out of this year's budget to pay, and that will start in January, and it can be eventually worked into the budget, but I'd, we've got $240 left over this year. So I'd rather take and spend it out of this year's money. I can get the paperwork together and get it in on time. I was going to have in the future, I will be recommending that that be split, planning board and ZBA. However, right at the moment, the ZBA budget is...
Maxed out.
Still in the black, but it's getting awfully close.
Copy that we got with the Apple funds, doesn't do that?
It doesn't do PDF-A, which is archival. It's a, it's a specification that once you save it as a PDF-A, even you can't change it.
Yeah, okay.
So, no, that, that's the only reason you're allowed to use it as, as a form of electronic retention, is that it is, it makes the document unalterable without it being, if you try to change it, it will cause the, the, the file to actually self-corrupt and, and die. So if, if the board is willing, it's $240 a year.
The only question I have, and I think it's good we can share it between us and the ZBA, does the town not have a copy? We probably don't.
Excuse me?
Does the town not have a license as part of like?
The town owns a license, but we discovered that once you put it on a computer, unless you log into, I log into this computer as the ZBA because technically the laptop belongs to the ZBA. I log into that computer as the planning board on my desk.
You can't share licenses and...
I cannot take it from that and put it on here because the logins are different.
Okay.
There is a minor saving. It's like $5 a month if you buy five at a time. Right at the moment, the town has one copy of Adobe Pro. It's owned by the cable. It's on the cable computer. So I don't, I don't have access to that computer and it just...
I totally understand, yeah.
I'm trying to drag us into the late 20th century.
Okay, well, that sounds reasonable.
Adobe's the only program that does this?
Excuse me?
Adobe's the only program that does this?
It's probably the cheapest one.
I did, I, I actually, I did more reading than I really anticipated. There are a couple of...
Blue Beam does it.
There's a free program. However, when you then, you know, start looking on forums and what have you, you find out that it's a free program unless you hit a glitch. And if you hit a glitch, you then get to pay. It's not like Firefox where, you know, I can't pronounce the company's name, Mozilla. They're, they actually like you reporting glitches and they fix things. PDF-A is a very archaic, not every, not very many people use it. So the free ones are, were built like 10 years ago.
Gotcha.
And I'm not going to trust the town's records to a free pro- I can't pronounce the company's name, Mozilla. They're, they actually like you reporting glitches and they fix things. PDF-A is a very archaic. Not very many people use it. So the free ones are, were built like 10 years ago.
Gotcha.
And I'm not going to trust the town's records to a free program. As cheap as I am, I would, you know, $240 bucks a year is not bad.
That's fine. That should be fine.
It's not cheap.
Do we need to vote on that?
Yeah.
Barbara, that's a good question. Do we need to, do we need to vote on that?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want me to make a motion?
Sure.
Can I make a motion to pay for the Adobe PDF-A system?
For one year?
For one year. Using our budget for 2022. Okay. Barbara, seconds.
And to encumber the funds from this year's budget?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
And I would like to adjourn the meeting at 9:12.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Oh, you're not going to read the list?
I gotta go.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays. Yes, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone. Oh, actually, I guess we'll see you before then.
I actually, Mark, have a joyous Saturnalia. Have a joyous Saturnalia. It's the actual holiday that got corrupted into Christmas.